October 18th. And Jenny, if you take the role?
Councilmember Thorson?
Here.
Councilmember Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Cole is absent. And Mayor Furlong?
Here. Motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved, Your Honor.
By Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
By Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Agenda is adopted. We have three topics, and I'll turn it over to City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. We have three topics tonight. The first one up is update for the Public Employee Insurance Program. Our insurance rates, we're looking to go up a little over 50%. We have a RFP out, trying to get some information of who else can step up and offer us some insurance, and what kind of rates they can offer. I'm going to turn that over to Dan. Dan looked into that. Mr. Winnick, our finance-
And I believe we took this a couple of years ago. Changed carriers, and we thought this was going to be good for a while, but evidently it's not. So...
Correct.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, yes, the city moved over to the PEAP Plan, the Public Employees Insurance Program, a few years back. In the past 12 years, the PEAP program has averaged about a 3.8% annual increase in insurances. And that was part of how the program was established, was to build a pool, offering of Minnesota cities offering insurance, and trying to keep it pretty much a flat rate. Obviously, we're hearing word that they're having a little bit of financial difficulties, especially with insurance premiums, you know, around, you know, the nation going skyrocketing to keep that 3.8. So what they have done this past year, and we got notification on September 30th, that some of the better performing entities that were in the pool have exited the pool. And in addition, they are changing their underwriting guidelines. And so, in essence, what they have done for us, the city, is that they're gone back a few years looking at the claims, and the claims are higher than our insurance premiums that we're paying, and we're basically paying a catch-up.
Strictly for us?
They did-
Are paying out more, or are claims being paid out more?
Yes, our, yeah, they gave us our-
New sample.
Yes, they gave our, we asked for it, and they gave us our specific data. And our, what was paid out from our pool here in the city of North St. Paul was higher than what we had contributed to the pool. And we're not the only ones. A number of cities were hit pretty hard. Depending on how you want to look at it, fortunately, we are right now in year one of a two-year agreement with PEAP. The only way that we can get out of the second year is if we had a 50% increase in our premiums. And that's what we've got, is a 50% increase. So we have the option, we would have to exercise that and give them a 30-day notice. So by December 1st, we would have to give them notification if we're going to get out of the PEAP insurance. So as soon as we received the letter, Jenny and myself, we contacted Gallagher Insurance Agency, and they put out an RFP. We did a public notification for the RFP. The RFP is out on the streets right now. It's to close, like, October 26th, and we should end up seeing if there was any interest in picking up the city's insurance. If there is no interest, our only option right now would be with PEAP. We have heard that, we have gotten one response to date, and even that was somewhere in the ballpark of about a 40% increase from where we are today. We're hearing that, you know, there was a chance that maybe we could be, you know, somewhere at about a 25% to 30% premium increase in holding what the city's current plan offers. But we'll hear from, you know, we'll wait till the 26th to find out if there's any more respondents, and any and all of that information will be brought back to the city council, and having a discussion with the city council on what to do. The unfortunate part for us is getting that notification on September 30th. If you're all aware that, that's the same date that we, you know, by statute, had to certify our maximum levy, which we approved earlier in September. So we can't increase our levy, you know, to cover any of the costs. The costs impact to us. So in the budget, again, in the past 12 years, they've averaged about a 3.8% annual increase. In the budget, I had budgeted 8%, and they're going up 50. That 50%, the delta 42%, would mean $197,000 increase to the city. The general fund would pick up approximately $139,000. The enterprise funds about $152,000. HRA about $2,600. EDA about $4,400. What that means for the employees in the city on an annual basis, for a single coverage, the employees pay 10% would go up $291 on an annual basis. The city would go up $2,600. And family would hit the employees $1,500 increase on an annual basis. In the city would increase about $6,200 on an annual basis. So what are we doing? I think Brian kind of talked a little bit about that, is that, you know, we did an RFP through Gallagher. We're also, the city had an insurance committee for a number of years. It's been discontinued. That has been, that is being pulled back together. I think it's first meeting with employees selected. I think there's department representatives that will be a part of the committee, is going to convene, I do believe, next Thursday, for the 27th, for the first time. Unfortunately, there's not going to be a lot that this insurance committee can make changes at this point in time. The RFP was basically given instructions to keep the coverages that we currently have, in other words, the deductibles and so forth that the insurance plan has. There may be some suggestions in the future that the insurance committee may make. Any changes that we do to the insurance plan, in my time here, I've heard from employees that, you know, the insurance, you know, they would like to see a plan that has lower deductibles and so forth. Anytime you do any of that, it all equates to much higher premiums. Much higher premiums for the employee, and it's also much higher premiums for the city. And obviously, if you can see what a cost impact here of 50% increase does to the city at the tune of $198,000, you know, any change in the premium plan, and we did reach out to PEAP, and there's two other plans that they offer that are non-HSA compatible, and their premiums are significantly higher than where we're at today. I mean, over double to what the premiums are. So the committee is really going to, I think, have to look at comparabilities from other cities. What are the offerings? The reason for that is because one of the big things that's happening all around is, you know, attracting and retaining employees. And I think probably, I mean, you've heard the police chief talk about it a number of times, that just in the police force itself, it's hard to attract, you know, candidates to come and work in a police force. And there's a number of organizations that are actually offering bonuses. But part of your benefit package is a very important and critical component that does attract an individual to come work for a various agency. So I think we need to compare ourselves to other cities that are around in the metro area, to what are they offering for those packages. And I think that's a part of what an outcome of this insurance committee should be looking at. I will sit on the insurance committee only in an advisory role, and advisory from the standpoint of trying to give a little bit of direction of what they should be looking for, and some information that they should try to attain. And if they need to have financial information of what impacts that would be, both for an employee in the city, I would provide that information. But I can't have a voting right or input right onto it because I'm the one who has to end up reporting back to the city council and making a recommendation of where we should do from a budgetary standpoint. So I'll play an advisory role in case they need some information from a historical perspective, and then if they need something, projecting something out into the future for them.
It's part of the union contract, isn't it?
Yes, 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 it is.
Under guidelines on the union?
Yeah, and Jenny and our city manager Frandl jump in. I think the union contract really doesn't specify what the coverages of the insurance are. It's more of percentages, where for a single coverage, the employee pays 10%. The city picks up 90% of the cost. For family, it's 20, 20, 80.
No matter what rate is, it's just a percentage.
Yeah.
Whatever that rate's going to be.
Right. But in future negotiations, depending on how the premiums go, definitely could impact the package that they're going to be asking for, in other words, in their cost of living, you know, increases in the future. So it's a tough balancing act, you know, that's going to be, that's going to have to be looked at before we end up making any final decisions. Now, because of the late notification, and what we're, late notification from PEAP of letting us know of this increase, one component to it is, is we can't change our levy. And so, right now, where we're sitting, I truly was in hope that we would have more discussions on the general fund, in hopes to try to maybe drop that levy somewhat. We're sitting at a combined levy increase of 8.48%. I really don't think that's going to be possible at this point in time with this increase that's out there, even if it's at a 30% or 40%. The saving grace for it all is, is that we did have an approximately $198,000 that our intention was that it would be an increase to our street maintenance. Unfortunately, that may end up being what we use that, those funds for here in this upcoming 2023 budget, is to cover insurances. So again, fingers crossed, hopefully, we can get some good RFPs in, and we can get a proposal that is significantly less than the 50% increase that PEAP is giving to us. One of the options that you need to be aware of is that if we elect to go away from PEAP, we cannot rejoin PEAP for two years. So then we will be on the open market, at least for the next two years.
How, why was it so late? I mean, it was not on our fault, but why didn't they project this? Or, I mean, it just seems like it's kind of like let out of the barn really late on this. Or is this typical? I mean, I don't remember having this, like, this discussion.
Well, to me, from my perspective, it is late in the game, obviously, because by statute, cities need to certify their levy by September 30th. So that's when you get the notification. Why we haven't heard that in the past is because their philosophy from PEAP has been to keep the rates relatively low. Somehow, they've changed their methodology without communicating it to everyone, and I would assume that they were going through their numbers and calculating what they would be for everybody before they disseminated that information. My understanding is also that they have a outside company that actually does their financials for PEAP, and they are currently out for an RFP to get a new firm. So that's kind of another little indication that they're more than likely not satisfied with their current firm that they're working with, and it may be, for some reason, they may believe that that has led them into where they're at from a financial standpoint that made them make this change, and not treating everybody, because their past philosophy was treating everybody as a pool, and whatever increase went, everybody got the same increase. Now they're breaking it apart more, more consistent to what, you know, the market itself does.
So is everybody getting the 50% increase, or is just North St. Paul getting the 50% increase?
North St. Paul isn't the only one that's getting a 50% increase.
Not as a whole?
Not as a, not as a whole.
Not getting raised?
No.
The same?
No, no.
Seems odd.
It's because they're changing their methodology of how they're doing it. So there were some others that did, we got information, there were some others that did receive a 50% increase. There were some that received 20, 30% increases. So, yeah, it's-
Is that legal?
You know, I mean, I would imagine that they can, well, it's definitely a change in their philosophy, and from how it was established in the past. And, you know, even the letter that they had sent, you know, talks about that, you know, kind of in a general way, but that they've had to change their methodology of their underwriting guidelines of all they've done in the past, and that they're no longer able to, you know, to keep it the same raise for everybody. And I think in a large part, that's why the city made an excellent choice a number of years ago to going to PEAP, because it was keeping rates, you know, you were really, truly in a whole big pool. Now, the way that they've at least described it to us is that they're now going to look at entities separately, no different than you would in, you know, if you were to go out to the market.
So is it based, every year, they reassign the number? Are you guaranteed for two years, or one year, or?
No.
The rate?
No, you're not.
You're not?
No.
So every year, they could change that rate every year?
Right. They have not shared their full underwriting guidelines, and to, well, that, what is their complete methodology that they're doing? But obviously, by the information that they've shared, they've at least done, they at least have done, did a two-year look back of payouts versus premiums. And I, you know, based on the information they provided, I agree with them. We have drawn out, you know, more payments than we have contributed to the pool. But that wasn't the philosophy that the PEAP was built upon. So this was a total shock and surprise, you know, to us. That's where, you know, based upon past historical, again, 3.8%, I put in 8%. I'm playing it very conservative, making sure we've got enough money into it, and being shocked when this came. So Jenny had to pick me up after she shared the information with me. It was like, wow. And to me, the only saving grace that we had was that we did have money that we had put into the budget for street maintenance that we could allocate to this. And then I have some other thoughts, because I don't want to see our street maintenance go without those funding, and that'll actually, I'll discuss it when we come up to our next item, when we look at the third quarter general fund.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's pretty obvious. I mean, we need to do an RFP, and we're doing that. That's what you do when you see these drastic increases. I'm not familiar with PEAPs and their history, but it seems like it's, you know, they formed this pool, and they sold a bill of goods to a bunch of cities, and they made promises that they can't keep, and some of them are out of their control, and they're making adjustments just like any other person or business would need to. So it's pretty obvious what we need to do, and hopefully, we can find an insurance carrier that is less and more consistent. But, you know, this kind of has similarities to, I don't know how familiar people are with the Fire Relief Association, and, you know, if we're going to have a discussion about that, but there's been talks recently with that group about switching to some state relief that manages the funds. And they're, you know, in my opinion, it's not an attractive option, because they share with you just the grandiose, fair, rosy things to get you in, and then once you're in, you can't get out. Well, you can, it takes an act of the state legislature, so good luck with that. Whereas now, you know, when I was on the fire department, we were with Wells Fargo Advisors, and we were with them for many, many years, and they're, you know, big corporate structure and turnover of representatives who we were dealing with. We made the decision to switch to another private entity, and we've been happy with them. But now there seems to be this push to put everyone into this state-run thing that, you know, I don't know if this is any similar to, has similarities to that, but, you know, you should always be cautious of what the salesman's pitching you and what the realities are. So, you know, we're having to deal with this. And, you know, the fact that we've locked our budget in and we can't go up, you know, there's all sorts of ways you could slice the pie. I've said that before. And a lot of your projections, I think, you know, when we're looking at these enterprise funds and internal funds, you're looking way down the road, 10 years, and that's great. But, you know, this is an example of the problems that come up when we do it, when we look at that. And we kind of have to look at just the next year, the next two years, what we're in our control, and we can ratchet back contributions to certain funds out of other, you know, there's all sorts of options and things we can do. So I don't think this is a doomsday scenario, and we're certainly not going to be laying employees off. So we'll just continue with the RFP and hope for some good news.
Councilmember Thorson, I absolutely agree. This isn't a doomsday. Absolutely not. We've got, we've got options, and I'll present an option when we do this next item here, that we look at the third quarter, because we are performing halfway decent in the general fund. And if you remember, we ended last year with a 44%, you know, fund balance per our policy. So, you know, one way or the other, I think we're going to be on the same path that we were with the budget, just would like to be able to see these rates come down somewhat. And I absolutely agree, and that's why we jumped on it right away, is we went out for the RFP. I mean, you know, I believe we did our due diligence in making sure that we're doing, taking care of the city's best interests and the taxpayers' interests, and trying to find a better, lower cost. The reality to it is, is that whatever this program had offered in the past appears to be sunsetting. And what it means to us moving forward is that we are going to see potential for volatility in our health insurance rates. There could be years that it goes up, and there could be years that go down. And I think we're all aware of that in government, that those are the things that we don't like to see. We like to see things kind of more of a constant, so we can kind of manage them.
Like to be able to predict.
We'd like to be able to predict. And that's really, that's really it, because I absolutely agree with Councilmember Thorson. You know, every, we can lay out the best plan that we want, and something like this can come up and change our course very quickly, but it doesn't mean that we don't attempt to try to make that plan out there, and kind of looking at it and trying to get back on course. And I think that we've got options to get it back on course. So I don't think it's a doomsday. We're not, definitely not laying off staff.
It sounds like getting out of the plan is not a bad thing either. It'd take us two years to get back in, but who knows what those rates are going to be like in two years?
Absolutely.
Doing a comparison with other carriers. You're just going to get the cheapest carriers, you know, cheapest as possible.
Yeah. And when we come back to the city council with the information we get from the RFP, we'll also have additional information from the PEAP program to affirm, hopefully affirm from them, that their methodology will be more of a volatile, that it'll, you know, every year could be a bigger, you know, could be increases or decreases. In other words, they're going to be looking at it from a market perspective, you know, again, going back, looking at your past expenditures, what your contributions are, and there's going to be, I call it, catch-ups, which then end up being significant increases in a year, or decreases, if that's the case.
The payoffs, was that due to injuries, or was that due to layoffs, or in the past year?
I'm going-
That we had a lot of?
I don't think we ever got specific information to the, you know, where the payouts actually went. I mean, Jenny and I made some speculations of where we thought they might have been, but I think a lot of that's, a lot of the specific information, I think, is covered underneath the HIPAA laws, that we wouldn't be able to get that information. So they give it to us more on a monthly total cost basis of what was paid out.
Does the League of Minnesota Cities, do they have a policy that, you know, the cities, they don't have a pool of?
Not to my knowledge, on the insurance, no.
Just wondering.
No, I, no, it's a good question, because they do a fantastic job, and we use their resources quite significantly in many other areas, so, yeah.
Anybody else got any questions?
Are there any costs associated with joining or leaving any of these policies at the time that we're trying to do it for the second year?
There is no cost associated with getting out of the PEAP insurance program at this point in time. Our only option to get out is, because we're in the first year of a two-year contract, is if there was a 50% increase. That was per their clause.
Thank you, Dan. Turn it back over to City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up is the third quarter statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for the general fund. And I will turn that back over to Finance Director Winnick.
Welcome, Dan.
Well, thank you, very much, Mayor. Councilmembers?
It's that time of year, it's all about the finances.
Yes, so this is the, this is the third quarter statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance of the general fund. You will notice in a second that, you know, it shows the budget versus the actual for, you know, through September. It'll give an overall projection for the year based on trends and assumptions, and then the change in the fund balance for the current period and annual projection. So it'll kind of show what this looks like here. So the first column is the 2022 adopted budget. It's the actuals as of September 30th. It's the variances at that point in time. I do a projected of what I believe the outstanding is going to be. In other words, what revenues we're going to be collecting still for the remainder of the year and/or expenses that we're going to have for the remainder of the year. I give a year-end projection and then show where that's going to be. So right now, I have us at approximately about $160,000 increase in our fund balance. The last time that had given an update, that projection was at about $330,000. And so we look at that $159,000. A significant part of that, which gets us pretty close to the 330, is due to market value adjustments, which through our first nine months in the general fund is a decrease of approximately $110,000. So if you were to add that $110,000, you'd be up to $279,000. So what is market value adjustment? Per Gatsby, we need to show our investments at their fair market value. So in times where interest rates are on the climb, your fair market value goes down. When interest rates are going down, the fair market value goes up. Why? Because you buy your investments at a certain point in time. You're locked in at the, at the interest rate. And so as they go up and down, your market values go up and down too. It is an unrealized loss. What is meant by that is that you haven't realized it. The only way that you would realize that if you were to sell that investment before is maturity. But we hold all of our investments through maturity. So it's more of a financial reporting than it is kind of a reality. But that's, it's included and it's actually included in the other revenues. And interest rates are still, you know, fluctuating. And so we probably will see, well, we will see some more unrealized losses showing up on our, you know, through the year-end and through, on our financial statements. But it will not be realized on, you know, in there. If we look at the revenue section there, you'll see probably the biggest increase definitely was permits. You know, it was up over what we had budgeted by $580,000. In our 2023 budget, I have increased the budget for permits up to about, I think, $500,000 some thousand to be much closer than what we've been seeing the past number of years. But yet still not as high as this because obviously, this was really generated because of the hailstorm that came through the city. So we have the $581,000 is a significant increase. We're seeing some extra money coming in through intergovernmental, you know, more in the police and fire aid sections. And then the other revenue was with a bigger decrease is really due to, again, that market value adjustment that's showing up in here. And then when I project it out, I'm anticipating that we're going to, you know, from what's in the budget, be down about $220,000. Again, I look at things from a very conservative standpoint. I mean, our condition could be much better than this by the year-end. And we'll keep our eyes on that and looking at everything, both revenues and expenditures. If we look at, from the expenditure side, again, you're going to see the building inspections being way over budget. Again, that's an equation of the permitting. We contract for those services. And depending on what type of permitting service that we receive, like if it's an electrical inspection, they get 80%, we get 20%. If it's some of the other permitting, they get 90%, we get 10%. One of the things to be aware of, and if you look at it and you say, oh, well, you're going to be, you're going to have revenues that are increasing 581, but you got expenditures $579,000. That's pretty close. You just got done telling me that they're 10% and 20%. Where did the difference go? Well, the difference goes because how we recognize permitting revenues and expenditures is at the time that they are incurred or received. So the revenue shows up immediately. The expenditures may have a timing difference of a month, two months, maybe three months. So in other words, at the end of last year, we could have gotten revenues that were recognized, but the expenditures didn't show up until the beginning of the next year. So there can be a fluctuation between how they're looking at it. So it doesn't necessarily prove out to be just, the ability just to go a 10% and 20% component to it. The other significant overage on the budget side is the police department. However, in the police department, if you recall, the city council had approved during the year, this year, a police officer. So there's an increase of expenditures for the police officer that was not in the budget and will not be, from a budgetary standpoint, in the budget until 2023. In addition, when the budgets were set, the union contracts were not fully complete. We were pretty much in line with what we budgeted in 2022 to how the union negotiations churned out. With probably the biggest exception was, if you recall, and I, and I think it was Councilmember Wong, that you had asked what the cost impact of that change was. And that was for the sergeants, changes that happened in their union contract. And I did a calculation at that point in time. And I think it was, and responded back, I think it was approximately $40,000. So, you know, there was, so those two. And then in addition, there's approximately $30,000 worth of expenditures here that'll be refunded through a grant for the phlebotomy grant that isn't being reflected here in a budgetary standpoint. So the intention of what to do with some, with all of these overages and shortages and the phlebotomy grant is that later part of this year, I will bring a budget adjustment to amend the budget to get it more in line to where we're really at and what our expenditures and revenues truly were for your approval. But again, we are looking positive for the year. So that may be a good source and may bring the recommendation here towards the end of the year or early part of next year of transferring those funds for, for street maintenance if the PEAP dollar amount continues high, as long as we're over that 40% fund balance regulation part of our policy. And that'll be brought for discussion. Proud to say the finance department has, is about $77,000 to the positive. So I'll be looking for my bonus. No, I'm just kidding. But, you know, part of that is. But, you know, part of that is with the reorganization that we've done. And have not, you know, part of that reorganization had a part-time accountant. Really haven't used the part-time accountant through this year. We've been, you know, going through it ourselves. And we've been pretty good. Obviously, there's things that we can enhance and that's where the request. For the 2023 budget of adding an accountant comes in because we can do a much better job than where we're at right now. But we're managing getting through things. And I think we're doing an exceptional job, but want to see it get even better. And being more connected to doing some more, especially for the budget in the year, next year, I'd like to do more of community outreach on the budget so we can get some more input from the residents and to keep you better informed. So I think that's really where the accountant will come in and help greatly. And then, and then to make sure that we're keeping our separation of duties. But finance is doing very well. The community development you'll see is projected at being about $66,000 over budget. A large part of that and almost all of it is due to what I have in there for a community development director. Again, that was approved in the middle of the year without any increase in the budget. So there will be somebody hopefully coming in shortly into that position. And so I've included, you know, the salaries for that individual to be in part of the budget. So I will take.
We had talked about in the past during the budget committee for, you know, the public, you know, getting some people involved.
Yes.
Talked about that in the past.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because of turnover and staff and all that, we just never got it off the ground.
Right. No, and, and I think it's a good look, you know, it helps me out greatly too. I love to hear what citizens, their perspectives, how they look at things. You know, there's ways that we can show things a little bit differently. You know, there's definitely some areas where revenues are being recorded in one spot, but expenditures don't, expenditures don't get reported in that same area. And so those are some discussions on how we want to do things in the future that I think can enhance our presentation of our financials and make it clear for everybody to understand and know exactly where we're at. And we're going to see that coming up here when we, when we look at budgets. So I think that's an important component that we need to get perspective from, from the outside.
I think another important thing too, like you kind of touched on with the unrealized loss from the investments, is another thing the city has really not done a very good job of tracking is, you know, like, public work staff time doing something like demoing the HRA house. And there's no bill to the, and that, that's a cost. I mean, and instead of them going out and doing other things, they're doing that. And then that cost isn't being included in the overall cost of the home. You know, so that's just one specific example of how when, you know, city staff time is, you know, the city manager is spending more time in community development, is that being so billed or allocated to that? Or any enterprise fund, you know, so those sorts of things. I don't think, because it's just the nature of, I mean, at one point, staff did have to keep, you know, they would allocate their time to a billing code. And then that went away. And I don't, I think that's come back now in a sense somewhat, but I don't. It just seems like there's never a real, true understanding of what we're doing and where the costs are going. So that would be another benefit to maybe having this budget committee and looking at things like that, recommendations for changes moving forward. But we've, we've made changes to the way we present the budgets. We've had several different finance directors over the years, different city managers who have a different perspective on things and want to do things differently. So I think we're all just looking for consistency. And especially when, you know, we start to do things one way and it stays that way for future councils so they have a better understanding of how things are doing as well and not just kind of being lost in the dark and having no comparables to look at to make decisions, so.
I absolutely agree with you, Councilmember Thorson. Absolutely.
Yeah, Dan, did you have another scenario about this street maintenance? I hate to see that not be done. Or was there another thing you were going to talk about?
Yeah, yeah, because, you know, we're, you know, again, we're sitting at about $159,000. So I believe we will have, I'm going to say, so per our plan for street maintenance, it needs to be funded approximately 100, well, not approximately, $150,000 per year. I think we're going to have $150,000 that will be able to transfer from the general fund over to the street maintenance. Now, I'd feel a little bit more comfortable if we can get those insurance premiums down because then we definitely can cover it and still maintain at least our 40% fund balance ratio per policy. So that's really kind of where I see that we're going to be able to do that. And I'm kind of, I'm pretty confident that we will be able to do that. And again, that unrealized loss eventually will turn around because it's not realized. So it'll change, you know, I would anticipate it to change. If not in the latter part of 2023, we'll end up seeing it in 2024. Rates won't go up forever, but we could see it for a significant amount of time still just by how the economy and everything is looking at this point in time. But, you know, that's more to come. And, you know, the feds are going to continue to raise interest rates to try to get inflation under control. I think they're pretty committed to that. They haven't seen the numbers as far as the labor market and/or inflation. And that's really their two primary goals that the feds are looking at. So I think they're pretty much committed, coming up here in November, to kind of looking at another 3/4% increase. And then there's another opportunity in December for them to increase rates unless inflation starts to drop more to their liking.
You finished, Dan, on that?
If there's no other questions, yes.
Over to City Manager Frandl.
Final topic also has Dan up to bat. 2023 internal service funds and other budgets. Right back at you, Dan.
Welcome, Dan.
Well, thank you. Thank you, thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, and thank you, City Manager Frandl. The budgets that we're going to go over and take a look at today. So today, we've really done an extensive look at general fund, EDA, HRA. We are going to look at our internal service funds, in which we have five internal service funds, information technology, insurance equipment, city mechanic, and building maintenance. And then we have five other permanent fund budgets that we prepare. Community center, community event, fire relief, park, and street maintenance. Then after we get done with this, the next workshop, we will be discussing enterprise funds. And then after that, so the first meeting, first workshop in November, we'll go over enterprise funds. And then in the second meeting in November, we will be looking at the potential of our city fees and rates on whether there's changes or increases or decreases that need to be made into those. And then the first meeting in December is where we approve the, we have our truth and taxation hearing and we approve the 2023 budget as a whole. And so those are the budgets that we actually approve. So in looking at our internal service funds, again, we have five. And kind of gave a little bit of a description and kind of where we're at. There's the information technology. It is being presented for 2023 as a balanced budget of $444,268. What that means is that the revenue and expenditures match. There's nothing that's coming out of fund balance. So all of the $444,000 is being charged to other budgets, other cost centers, other departments within the city of North St. Paul. The significant changes as were, that was brought up early in our budget discussion as a driving force, is the Metro INET charges increase of approximately $72,000. The insurance, and the insurance does not include.
Did we ever talk about that, Metro INET, why it is going up so much?
Yeah. And it's kind of interesting. So City Manager Frandl and myself had met with Metro INET. They listed three different scenarios in which they were looking at, you know, labeled A, B, and C. C being the highest worst case, worst case scenario at $72,000, an increase would be the impact for the city of North St. Paul. So they have undergone a significant change in their organization and their operation. So I think last year they had hired a, I guess you call it a CIO. And they have all always been, they're housed and they've always been kind of like, I'm going to say more of a quasi-organization of Roseville, city of Roseville. And Roseville provides their accounting for Metro INET. So part of what they were looking at underneath their new leadership is that they were basically going to become their completely own entity. So part of those increases, one with the new CIO was looking at and did, from, from what she had told us, they, they did a staff analysis on the job functions that every one of their staff was performing. They found that there were a number, you know, from a historical standpoint, and any small organization, this always develops the same way, that all of a sudden you find where staff has inherited many more job functions than necessarily their job description. And so she was looking at, and Brian, City Manager Frandl, if you want to jump in, I think she was looking at an addition of five to six FTEs to cover some of the various functions. And then included into that was going to be, in addition to that, you know, some sort of administrative accounting staff for the organization. In addition to that, they have a very, very low fund balance for any capital replacement. So it was to build up their fund balance. And so I think that was kind of, I think that was pretty much the highlights of the conversation. The part that I have never seen is that in that meeting, they were going to be having a follow-up. And they've never had that. And there was going to be the final voting on what option, you know, the cities that are a part of this Metro INET. And I have never seen that, anything onto that.
So you're saying that this $72,000 may not happen?
It may not happen. They may choose, because this is option C, the highest. So there may end up going option A or mon- or option B.
And when do we, we don't know when that's going to be?
That's why I was thinking about that last week and I haven't had a chance to touch with City Manager Frandl. I have never heard, because he was going to be the contact person for them to set up. And they were supposed to include me on that, so when they had their meeting that we'd be able to attend. But I have never heard anything onto it, so I don't even know. So I'll reach out to follow up to find out where they're, where they're at. So i- if we do hear that it's not going to be as high as that, I can make adjustments to reduce what's being charged out to other departments, which then can ease some of the pain in the general fund and the enterprise funds to offset some of the cost of the insurance. So there's definitely a possibility, but we do need to find that.
Councilmember Thurston.
Now that we're talking about this, just a couple of quick questions to refresh my memory and maybe those who are watching and don't know. Do we know how many municipalities Metro INET services besides us? Obviously, Roseville, but do we have any idea of how many other municipalities they provide this service to?
They did provide us the whole list when they did. I didn't bring it with me. I'm going to take a guess that it's somewhere in the ballpark of, and City Manager Frandl, please jump in, because you saw that spreadsheet too. I'm going to guesstimate that it was probably about 20?
So roughly 20, maybe more or less. And what, what services are they providing to us that we pay for and utilize?
Phones.
And when you say phones, you're meaning we buy the phones, they, you know, someone calls, that's they're providing that phone service?
It's all on, all on their network.
Comcast or CenturyLink?
Correct.
Okay, and I'm assuming internet too?
That's correct. Servers.
So that, so all of our, all of our computers and everything, we don't have a server on hand here? It's all routed through them?
No, we do have, we do have, no, we do have, we do have some servers here. That's, that's one of the pieces in the finance that, and actually it'll be next Thursday. We will be, I'm going to segue for a second, and we'll be getting out some publication. I can finally confirm it with Carrie to get it out into our newsletter, newsletter and stuff. We will not be able to collect utility payments next Thursday as we go live. And we are actually moving off of a server into the cloud.
Okay.
Yep.
So they provide maybe back, some live and some backup, but we do still have, I'm, I'm trying, not trying to get into techni- I'm just trying to get, what do they provide? So and then our like city emails and stuff? And then there, I'm sure they provide some sort of, you know, protection, you know, whatever, you know, cybersecurity type of stuff, so that, that kind of falls under that internet. Is there anything else that they're, they're doing that we?
Security cameras.
Our security cameras?
Any kind of maintenance for any IT issues that anybody has?
And then, so they're, and they, you know, they're like the troubleshooting. If we have a problem with the phone, we call them. Okay.
Correct.
And software, software upgrades.
So, so they kind of, they're, they're providing a whole information, IT suite. How long have they been providing these services to the city of North St. Paul? Are you, and again, rough estimate.
Long time.
So is that 10 years, 20 years? I mean, 20 years ago, the internet wasn't even around, was it? I mean, where that dated now? I mean, maybe a little longer than that. I mean, but, I mean, have we always outsourced our services since the beginning of time with Metro INET? I mean, I'm just trying to get a part figure here.
I, I personally do not know that answer.
Ever since I've been on the council, it's been-
So 20 plus, we'll just say 20 plus.
Sure, sure.
In those 20 years, have we ever done an RFP for these services?
The answer to my knowledge is no.
Okay, so the whole point I'm getting to-
I know exactly where you're getting, and I think it's fantastic.
I'm just trying to, to illustrate for the public, who people may not know, we're talking about budget issues, we just got done talking about insurance costs. We've done RFPs in the past, it's common when things go up. Why, why are we not talking about doing an RFP for this stuff?
So if you recall when we had one of our workshops and I had asked the questions of the city council for ideas of trying to reduce some of the costs, one of the items, and I actually put it up there, was that we need to look at our technology. And so we are starting that process of looking. And first of all, it is to define exactly what services are being provided. You know, part of that is we do have an individual that's here like three days a week to help us with any troubleshooting, setting up PCs, da, 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 you know, kind of there. You get a high demand, especially for the public safety component to it. So we really need to get a clear understanding of what services that they're truly providing. But yeah, this, when this $72,000 hit came to us, I mean, we just didn't turn around and do nothing. But to develop an RFP, we need to know exactly what services are being provided to be able to articulate that and get it out onto the streets. And so I'm, I'm in hopes that there is some other way of, of being able to do that. I think both City Manager, I'm not going to put words in, in the City Manager's mouth, but I think we were anticipating that we would have this, for at least what we were told, that there was going to be this meeting with all of the participants, all the representatives from all the cities in metro that are part of the Metro INET, that we would be able to voice whether you were going to be doing A, B, and C. And we were going to try to find out a little bit more from what are they providing and what's going to be happening in the future. One of my concerns from that meeting, and I shared it with our City Manager, was that I, okay, let, let's say I understand what you're trying to do in building up and you're going to hit us a 20-some percent increase of, which equates to that $72,000. Okay, I'll take that. What does the future look like? Are, am I going to be seeing 20% increases moving in the future? Or is this part of, of this catching up on a fund balance? Which I totally agree, because we would end up having to do the same type of thing. Is it going to be more, you know, a 3% in the future? One of the responses of the individuals was there is that, you know, a lot of the service contracts that they are getting for some of the supplies or contracts that they have, that they're seeing and they're seeing in the future, that there would be like 10% increases. To me, it's kind of like, yeah, we need to start looking and getting a better understanding. And not that the city and the staff has not had this as a discussion in the past. Our communications specialist, or she's much more than that, Carrie has brought up that we really need to look at this technology and the services that are being provided. And there are some other options that we could look at. But I think it really starts, Councilmember Thurston, it really starts with that we need to be able to define those services, be able to put an RFP together and then get it out on the street just to find out where we're at.
And I'm not, by no means casting blame on you or anyone. I'm just, the simple questions of that, you know, I've asked here and, and that, you know, they, we've been using this company or this outfit for 20-plus years, but there's still questions on what services they provide. You know, to me, that's concerning. And that, you know, our service contract with them should probably outline all the services that we're paying for or they're providing. Because my concern too is that this is probably just one of those things that they've provided good services and we've just never really considered changing and we've had no reason to. And then they probably have not had significant increases like this, which would trigger someone to ask, well, what are we getting for this? But where I'm going with this is that, you know, if we're, maybe part of these, you know, because they, they obviously provide a wide range of services, maybe there's some services that we're paying for that we're not utilizing. We've seen that with, what's this software program that we struggled with, with the billing? Incode, or is that what it is called? Where we can't make changes to it and, you know, all these things. And there's other stuff that come with it that maybe we weren't using and utilizing and then we made a switch to this other thing and we're still kind of, there's duplication. So it's just an inefficient process, but at some point, hopefully, we move away from that and we're, we're using what we're paying for. And if, if they, they obviously provide a service and if it's an all or nothing and not like an à la carte type of thing, great. But if, if we can say, well, you know, we don't have to get our internet service from you, we can get it from someone else for cheaper, we should look at that. We, you know, but if that eliminates them saying, well, then we're not going to do everything, that's another maybe red flag that say, well, why, why would we limit ourselves to that? If it means, you know, saving thousands of dollars, especially over the course of, you know, five, 10, 20 years or whatever. So I would just hope that it's not a question of, well, we don't want to do it because we're stepping on toes or anything. But I just hope that we're going to go down that path of looking at RFP with this and other services that we've traditionally always had. And, and you know, it's, it's no disrespect, like our attorneys or engineers, everything. It's not a lifetime contract and it's our responsibility to make sure we're getting the best deal here too. I understand we developed relationships over these years, but, you know, we have an obligation to the taxpayers to, you know, good practice, every four to five years, maybe do an RFP and make sure they're in line with everything else, so.
Councilmember Thurston, I absolutely agree, and that was part of that workshop, that, you know, part of the workshop, the one that had asked those questions was to identify those things, because I'm in total agreement, you know, you know, and some of them that pop into my head, you, you've just said, you know, it's, it's not just Metro INET, it's, it's looking at the inspections contract that we have. It's engineering, it's attorney. Yeah, and, and, you know, I, I do, I do want to qualify one component to that is, and, and I won't go into any, two points I want to make. One, I have challenged our engineer on numerous occasions because I do not like how certain things are being done and I'm not going to go into that. And so they're actually making some changes on how we're seeing things. Doesn't mean that we, we don't do an RFP at some point in time. There is a value for a relationship and familiarity with an organization. So when we do an RFP, I also want us to have a discussion on what is that delta of savings that we need to achieve through the RFP before we actually move to a different vendor. So many, many, many years ago, I looked at things, and it was actually from a resource, looking at things from the standpoint of, do you outsource or in-source, you know, a service? And if you were currently having things done on an in-house, that there needed to be at least a 10% savings from an outsource for you to actually consider. So, and I'm not going to go into great detail about everything. I think I still have the, the manual of how to do all the calculations and that stuff onto it. But what it was pointing out is that there are, there is a value that's associated that you need to achieve before you really get a total realization. But yes, those items are all on that list. And that was part of what I was trying to get at with that, that workshop, is that to make everybody aware, and really it's more to get staff to say, okay, we need to start looking at things that we've, I guess, taken for granted or done, it's because we've always done it that way. And so, yes, your note's very well taken and I, I, again, I've said this to you before, I greatly appreciate your thoughts, your comments, and your ideas, because it, it really does spur myself and my staff on to coming up with different ways of looking at things. Other questions on this part?
I think the bottom line is, you know, this is something that has been increasing a lot. We're hearing, we have a communications person now that can actually look at what we're, you know, what we have, what are, what are, what are we working with? I think Carrie offers a lot of institutional knowledge that we haven't had in the past. Where now having that person on staff can actually look at what we have, what we need, and be able to make a good, you know, decision based on what is out there.
Absolutely. I agree. Moving on to, what do we have here, the equipment fund. We have a, a budget of $384,000. That's what's in the capital improvement plan. There's revenues of $513,000 per the capital improvement plan. Details, you'd have to look at the CIP plan for all of that, that you've had the opportunity to, to review. We do still have some outstanding questions that were raised from Councilmember Wong that we will address at one of the next two future workshops. In addition, that is going to go in front of the Planning Commission and the Parks Commission for their approvals of the plan before it's brought back for final adoption from the city council.
Skip insurance.
Oh, did I?
Yeah, I was just-
Sorry.
I didn't know what that $30,000 was.
Yeah, the, it's based upon, so i- if there's a litigation and there's a claim that's, ends up being made that we end up having to pay. So there's nothing that is absolute about that. This is based upon the past history of that account that we've, we have ended up having claims of about $30,000. So I wanted to have something included in there to do that. And again, the, the insurance budget is balanced budget of $491,000. Again, what that means is that the revenue and expenditures are the same. So it means we're getting revenues from other departments, so this is being allocated out. The equipment fund, city mechanic is a balanced budget of $37,000. The significant changes is that there's a need for a number of small tool and minor equipment that's needed by, for the mechanic that haven't been replaced for a number of years. So we've increased that about $15,500. Building maintenance, the budget is $495,000, revenues of $446,000. There will be a use of approximately $49,000 of fund balance to supplement- fund balance to supplement the expenditure or the budget side. Significant changes are, supplies are increasing about $14,500, contractual services increasing about $34,000, and capital needs in the building maintenance of approximately $21,000. So that takes us through our internal service funds. All of our fund balances, if you remember at the end of last year, and they're all projected this year to all be in the positive. We have no negative fund balances. If you remember, there was a negative fund balance in the internal service fund on the mechanic, and that has now been, since then, has been corrected. The other budget, budgeted funds that we do on a permanent basis are the Community Service Fund, Community Event Fund, Fire Relief Fund, Park Fund, and Street Maintenance Fund. The Community Center Fund, the Community Center Fund was created in 2020 to account for the rental revenues of the facility and associated maintenance expenditures. The budget shows, this budget for 2023 shows six months of rental revenue at $12,500 per month, and $139,600 for operating cost for the year. It's going to require $64,600 to be, to come from fund balance. And the long-term use of the building is still under discussion. Any questions with that?
Well, that's on the assumption that the lease ends on June 30. I mean, in theory, it could be extended another six months to the end of the year, and then we'd be in a positive, net positive position.
Absolutely. And again, when I prepare budget, I prepare based, but yeah, nope, I agree.
Point I make when I bring this up is that, like, this, you know, the comment of there's more than one way to slice the pie here, you know, was going to wait till the end, but, you know, we talk about equipment funds, and, you know, these monies that are budgeted to replace, you know, a Ford truck out of public works. You know, if something like this happens, like we're talking about this huge jump in health insurance, and we're scrambling to figure out, well, what can we do? The only option isn't always just to raise taxes. We could say, all right, let's take a look here. Instead of replacing this 2008 F-150 or 250 that's still in good condition and can still continue to work and still do the job, we'll we'll put that off a few years. And, you know, you can free up money in that sense, because a lot of this stuff is, you know, and I get it, you know, we have this capital improvement plan, we're trying to stick to it, and doing that stuff, it's just a, but it's an option. Right? So, you know, when we get into these things, like, you know, this, the the Community Center Fund, that's a huge unknown, too, that's going to have a lot of costs. It's going to have a huge impact on a lot of these things. It could change the way we need to reevaluate that whole capital improvement plan and and change things and and re-adopt that or reapprove that. But that's all, just to know that, you know, these are options, and there are other options out there as well.
And and I just going to make a, I'll make a comment back on there. Councilmember Thorson, I agree with you. There's there's always options. What I try to do is, and again, I, you know, and and if I conveyed it, you know, I I certainly didn't want to, for the insurance increase, it's not a doomsday. We have options, and I think we've got a very good option by the general, by the general fund. I agree with you that you can, you can delay a payment out of, you know, the equipment fund, you can transfer the funds over and and so forth. That that's, that's a temporary fix. Part of how I look at my my responsibilities, and again, I don't make the final decisions. My responsibility is I make a recommendation with a plan, looking out into the future. If the city council wants to make that decision and and go in a different way, I'm, you know, I'm not going to have hurt feelings. I just try to try to make it, everybody aware that, you know, if you you buy down all your fund balances, you don't levy, eventually you're going to have to have to have huge, significant, significant increases to keep things afloat. And so I'm trying to, trying to to have kind of a better plan and make everybody aware. But again, I I certainly don't disagree with your your comments. We absolutely can do that. But I don't think that this insurance, for health insurance, is is a doomsday component to it at at all. I think what I'm really trying to to say is that, hey, you know, you know, we got one. I think we've got a solution. We've got a significant increase. I think we've got a solution. Also, to make you aware that it does appear that something that was a program that kind of kept us on a very low annual increase is now going to be something that could be much more volatile, and that, you know, that we're all aware. Unfortunately, we have a very small general fund budget in levy, and so approximately every $60,000 is a percentage increase in that levy. And that's really kind of one of the components that I was talking about very early on in our budget discussion, is that we are fiscal disparities winner, and I want to make sure that we're protecting and getting as much fiscal disparity dollars as we possibly can, because that doesn't come directly from our residents. It comes from the residents around in the metro area, and it's it's a shared program. And if we don't, you know, if we don't levy to a certain thing, they're going to get, our residents will pick up, keeping everything constant, they will have an increase coming into next year with no benefit. But I absolutely agree with your your comments, and and I, you know, hopefully, I've, you know, in my time here, that I've always conveyed that I'm open to every idea and suggestion.
It it's more of in the past, the way budgets have been presented, it's like, here's our options.
No.
I mean, this is what we've got for you. And it's like a yes or no type of thing. And it's, I think it's just, there's more to that. And maybe it's, and especially to in your, in previous years, when, you know, there's been decisions that are, I think, in my opinion, done purposely to make it painful, like when we had to hire police officers and then lay them off. And now this is dated, this is going way back to, you know, 2010, 2011, but it happened, and it didn't need to. So.
Yeah.
Just trying to point that out.
No, and I think it's, I think it's fantastic. And again, I appreciate your your insights. And I think that's, that's where I think, you know, developing a a budget committee and having, you know, a couple of council members sitting on that and residents, and we start the process a little earlier in the year to get some of those inputs and thoughts, I think we can really flush a lot of, you know, you know, those options, questions, and we can develop a much more cohesive budget moving into the future. Community Event Fund, it's a pretty small fund. It's right now just being utilized for really the North St. Paul car show and and a little things past history. It used to be for lifeguards, you know, at the Silver Lake Beach. Fire Relief Fund, and Councilmember Thorson kind of talked a little bit, a little bit about this. Right now, we're, we're not a part of the the state's fund on the fire relief. It was created in 2019 to pass through North St. Paul's Fire State Aid to the North St. Paul Fire Relief and accumulated additional funding for future pension contributions to ensure 100% funding of the retirement benefits. In 2021, the Fire State Aid, Fire State Aid was approximately $77,000.
One other comment on this, this is another one of those things, kind of what I'm touching on when you're talking about options for budgets. For many, many years, the city did not have to make a contribution and chose not to. And and like the point you're making, if you if you choose not to do those things, it's going to come to head at some point, and it did, when the fund no longer was self-sufficient, and 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 then the city had to make large contributions, and were obligated to do that. So that was putting a strain on the fund. So the decision was made to say, well, let's take a look at the average contribution, and let's do that, whether we need to do that or not. But then that changed as well, because it's just that low-hanging fruit to where, well, let's just get rid of that $40,000 contribution to fire relief, and then that frees up our money to do whatever else we might do. So just another example of what I'm trying to point out here.
Park Fund, the Park Fund was created to finance capital improvements related to the parks system. Park system initial funding was donation-driven, but has grown to, grown to include reservation of park facilities, which were estimated at about $63,000, and the local government aid of $100,000. The fund also transfers approximately $80,000 to, for debt payments related to the Casey Lake Pavilion.
When does that end, the Casey Lake Pavilion payments?
I have to get back to you, and then I'll shoot you, I'll shoot all of you an email on that. And then the last budget that we have is the Street Maintenance Fund, and the Street Maintenance Fund was created to provide minor rehabilitation to city streets. Most improvements are made with a maintenance overlay, which is a process of milling pavement on the curb line, then overlaying a pavement mix on the existing street. This fund receives the annual street maintenance allocation, approximately $151,000, local government aid of $54,000, and beginning in 2023, a transfer from the general fund street maintenance that was that $198,000, really, you know, based upon our capital improvement plan, need $150,000 being transferred into that, but more to come on to that in the future. All of the budgets are attached. If you want to look at any of them or have any discussion on to those, I'm more than happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Thorson?
Just out of curiosity, is there a way, when you run those reports that you're saying that are attached, to omit the, if there's no, a non-zero? I mean, it's just, it's like you're, you know, I get it, but it's just for more of like public consumption, you're looking at these documents, they're just full of zeros. Is there a way to just run a report and say, don't, you know, only only print fields with values, not zeros, unless the zero is relevant, relevant, you know? I don't know. I'm not familiar with the city.
I know, it bothers me, too.
Okay, so I guess I'm guessing that's a no.
No, no, there, there, there is a, there is a way, although, yeah, so I.
You'd have to hire another accountant? Well, we don't want to go that route. So this, just the Internal Service Fund, it seems like these are just, they're set up to charge, make sure we're charging departments correctly for fee, you know, things like, you know, in years past, we used to just put all the city's insurance, and it was paid out of the enterprise fund, and that was never reflected in the city's general fund budget. So it's just to make sure that these are accurate, true budgets. So if someone were to say, well, what's our fire department's budget? Compare that to Lake Elmo, is that legit or not? Well, North St. Paul, they don't have to cover insurance. This is more of like a true cost of IT and all that stuff. So it's just, it's a pretty simple thing that we're not having to, you know, we're just making sure we're covering our costs.
Right.
It's just general.
Yeah, I think that, I think, Councilmember Thorson, I think that was a very good way of of describing it. It's, it's really so we show what the true cost of, of, let's say, public safety is.
And in years past, our CAFOR had indicated that there was one Internal Service Fund that was running at a deficit, and that was the the city mechanic, and that has since been.
Rectified.
Result. And the reason why we have a city mechanic Internal Service Fund is is mostly because there's a city mechanic that we have on staff, and he performs work for enterprise fund-related activities, being the electric department mostly. Is that a correct assumption, that that's why we have this fund?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's not, I don't know. The only thing I would correct is that not necessarily mostly electric. It's water, wastewater, street maintenance. So it's basically all of our vehicles that are in the city without, with the exception of, I don't think they touch anything on the public safety side to it.
So, yeah, because they're, they're typically, he's just working on public works, equipment, electric enterprise equipment, and most of this, the fire stuff is outsourced, and same with the police vehicles.
Correct.
So that's, that's why this is in here, because some people might think.
Oh, sure.
Why aren't, why don't you have a, you know, department head, you know?
Oh, sure.
I mean, I guess we could, if we wanted to, but that's why that's here, and that's why that comment was coming up in our CAFOR that, hey, this fund's running at a deficit. It's not good to have deficits.
Right.
You should fix that. So that's, that's just been fixed over time, allocating the true cost to what the city mechanics were working on. Okay.
Yep.
That was all I, question I had.
Anybody else? Any questions? If not, thank you, Dan. It's a lot of numbers.
Well, Mayor, city council members, once again, I thank you very much. Love the dialogue, you know, and get a lot of insight, and just shows that there's areas for improvements on a continuous basis, and I love it.
Always room for improvement.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you.
If there's nothing else, City Manager Frandl, anything else?
Nothing further.
Nothing else? Entertained a motion for adjournment?
So moved, Your Honor.
Moved by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Sent by Councilmember Peterson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Close. We are adjourned for about five, five minutes.